We're gonna get a blip. There we go. Good evening and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Councilmember Montoya?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Hinkle?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Dixon?
Mayor Heigl?
I am here. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just as a note to everybody, due to the ongoing construction in this building, public restrooms are not currently available in the building. Heated public restrooms located right in the south parking lot, just on the west end. Next item on the agenda is council announcements, and I'll start with Board One.
Okay. Well, it's been a while since we've been here, and there's a lot of amazing things going on in the city, so I've got a few announcements, but I'll try to be quick. First, it's been extremely cold outside. We've had some cold weather come through, and it looks like it's gonna be even colder the week ahead, so make sure everybody stays safe, take precautions, make sure your pipes don't freeze, use common sense and safety when you have your electric heaters on, things like that. Keep your pets safe and out of the cold. Make sure you're checking on your neighbors, your elderly neighbors, people with disabilities, things like that. Just pop in and make sure everything's okay, make sure everybody's safe. And being that it's cold, if you're like me and my family, you're probably getting a little stir-crazy, unless you take advantage of all the amazing things we have indoor here in Norman. That includes Firehouse Arts Center. They have amazing classes going on all the time. They have classes for veterans, they have classes for youth, elderly, people with disabilities, all kinds of amazing things always going on there. Our YFAC is an amazing facility. There's all kinds of amazing events going on there. We currently have youth basketball going on, which the city broke a record this year. We have over seventeen hundred kids enrolled out there playing, so that's an amazing thing right there for sure. We also have spring volleyball coming up. Let's see, youth volleyball begins on April first, the early registration is January thirty-first. We have baseball and softball coming up. Early registration for softball is in two weeks, I think. That league begins April seventh. We have our brand-new soccer complex, so soccer's about to get going out there. So all kinds of amazing things going on here in Norman for that. Next, I'm a member of quite a few groups on Facebook that do community watch. There's Norman Neighbors, there's Norman Community Page, there's all kinds. These pages are an amazing resource. If you see crimes and things going on, and one thing that came to my attention because of these groups is there's currently a TikTok challenge where teenagers are going around vandalizing cars, smashing windows out of cars, stealing the things that are inside it. Now, we've already had, we've always had issues with people breaking into cars and things, but this TikTok thing, people reached out to me. I contacted Chief Foster. He is working with the criminal, or NPD has their Criminal Investigation Division looking into this, as well as PACE. PACE is a group of officers that concentrate their efforts on transients and homeless individuals and try to prevent that kind of crime. But they're asking if you have any videos, if you have any pictures, if you're the victim of one of these crimes, reach out to NPD, because that's what it takes. If we want a safer city, we all have to look out for each other. We have to look out for our neighbors, we have to protect our own, and one way, and that's how you do it. So I've said this numerous times, but NPD bases their patrol schedule off of the calls they receive. So if you want more police in your neighborhood, you want a safer neighborhood, you have to call, you have to make the reports, you have to be involved. So next, I just want to take a minute and offer our prayers to everything to the people in California. The fire's there, it's, if you've seen it, the death toll, last I saw this morning was twenty-four people. It's the most expensive wildfire in U.S. history, probably gonna be one of the most expensive disasters in U.S. history. But we're lucky here in Oklahoma. Our state has some amazing leadership. We care about our people, and our city is no different. But we have, when we have a disaster like this happens, it's important that we look at what we can do to prevent these things from happening here, and to make sure we're prepared if it happens here. So I reached out to Mr. Battingley, I reached out to Chief King. And in Norman, we have seven thousand and fifty-two fire hydrants. We only have four fire hydrants that have a call or maintenance, are out for maintenance right now. We have, our departments inspect forty to one hundred fire hydrants every month, and our lake, we have water in our lake. Mr. Battingley told me that our lake is about six inches above normal for this time of year. So even if we have a hot, dry summer, we are looking really good. So I just want to say how proud I am of our city for taking safeties, having, it's paramount. So Mr. Battingley, Chief King, Chief Foster, all of our department heads, and all these guys that work every day behind the scenes to make sure that we're safe and to make sure that our city is prepared for emergencies, you know, keep it up. I'm very grateful and very proud of all you guys. And the last thing I want to talk about, last week, there was a twenty-seven-year-old young man who passed away in Cleveland County. And what a lot of y'all may not know is this individual was my nephew's biological father. He had a lot of issues. He made a lot of bad choices. He was addicted to drugs. He had some mental health issues going on. But despite all that, he was in a place where he should have been protected. He deserved to be there, and society deserved to be protected from him, but he also deserved to be protected, and not to have the drugs and the addictions able, to be able to come in there and then basically end his life. And, you know, that's a failure that, you know, we're all gonna have to live with. And I'm waiting for the reports to come out, and I've talked to people that were inside there with him. It was more than like, it was a fentanyl overdose, is what it was. And fentanyl is, I've talked about it before. It's, we're allowing it to come into this country, and it is destroying, it's destroying lives. You know, but, yeah, I talked to this young man a few times the past few years, because he lost his children. My in-laws raised his kids, and he would call me, and I would try to help him to be a better person, and to understand what it took to be a father, and what it meant to take accountability. And I was always there to, at least, because they weren't allowed to tell him about his kids, legal reasons. And so I was always there to, I could at least tell him that his kids were doing good, and just to be there for him. But when I see all the failures that led up to his death, and I'm not just talking about Cleveland County, I'm talking about when he was homeless here, and the counselor who sat in this seat before me would go out to his campsite with my sister-in-law and take them clean needles, and take them clean pipes. I mean, she'd also take him a sandwich and a shovel, so he could bury his poop, and they could bury their poop, but all they did, that counselor, enabled his addiction. When I see people up here advocate for safe drug kits, and taking away people's accountability, and making the people dependent on our shelters and handouts, that's a failure. And when we know for a fact that sixty-five percent of our homeless people here in Norman suffer from a drug addiction, and they suffer from mental health issues, and we think that they're capable of making the decision to get out of that situation by themselves, we're fooling ourselves, and we are failing them. So I just want everybody here to think about those things, and how fast a life can end, and how fast a young kid will never have a chance to have a better father, because so many things failed. And it was his, it was his choice, and ultimately, he's being held accountable. But there's a lot of pieces that failed too, that need to be held accountable as well, and it's not compassionate to let these people slowly commit suicide out here with drugs and addiction. So that's all I have on that. But other than that, I'm glad to be back, and let's move forward. Thanks.
Councilmember?
No announcements forward to. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Happy New Year and good evening, Ward Three in Norman, Oklahoma. I hope this evening finds you all well. I just have one announcement related to an important date and dates related to it. So the upcoming date to put on your calendar is February eleventh. That is the upcoming City Council and Mayor race. So if your voter registration is not up to date, your deadline to update your voter's registration is January seventeenth. If you received absentee ballots by mail in two thousand and twenty-four and would like to continue to receive absentee ballots by mail, you will need to complete a new absentee ballot using the OK portal. Then, applications can also be downloaded from the State Election Board website by, or by contacting your county election board. The deadline to submit the application for your absentee ballots is January twenty-seventh. Then, early voting is February sixth and seventh, and finally, the election for odd wards, and mayor is February eleventh. And that's all I have. So for all of you here and watching online, thank you all for being here.
Good evening, Ward Four in City of Norman. I hope everyone enjoyed their holiday break, and we're all ready to jump into the new year. I know I am. I have a vision for Ward Four as seen through the lens of civic IQ, so in early November, I began planning our two thousand and twenty-five quarterly Ward Four meetings. There's social, there's a social media infographic of dates and topics posted across my social media platforms I'm on, and I have an email list for those who let me know a while ago that they don't use social media at all. These meetings are structured to be flexible enough to include emerging topics of interest as well. They will happen on Saturdays from nine-thirty to eleven a.m. in the Norman Development Center, two twenty-five Northwestern Avenue. Next month, on February twenty-second, the first of these kicks off, and I hope you will make a little time to learn and discuss the following topics. The first topic will be the power of an organized neighborhood, which should cover how to create an organized neighborhood, like through a voluntary association. And that aids in the second point, which is municipal disaster preparedness. We'll cover some of the things the city does, but also, you're gonna need your community in the event of a natural disaster. And then we have budget updates and a feedback session, where I'll be taking input about where you would like to see improvements made in our community. And there will be relevant news that might crop up between now and February twenty-second. On, we have another Norman Resource Fair Wednesday, January fifteenth, from two to five p.m. at The Well, two-ten South James Garner. The Resource Fair will be distributing free coats and blankets until they run out. The municipal warrant clearing event will be taking place at this Resource Fair, and it will help address failure to appear in court for traffic or non-traffic issues, outstanding fines and costs. If you have questions about warrant clearing protocols, call four zero five three six six five three two five, and come prepared. The Resource Fair generally includes pathways to replace lost documents and connect community to resources they may be eligible to use. And I could list Ward Four events for days, but I would rather redirect people to visit norman.com to find regularly updated events calendar and a social media representation of local events on Instagram and Facebook. I believe they're on TikTok and YouTube as well. If you're a local event organizer, I encourage you to connect with Visit Norman to list your events, but also, they sponsor events. So if you've been wondering how to, I don't know, get extra money for Mardi Gras or Porch Fest, I really recommend reaching out to them and seeing if your request is something that they could help fund. Thank you.
Councilmember?
No announcements. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you. Good evening, Norman, and Ward Six. I just want to give some announcements about some upcoming events. The Norman Parks and Recreation Daddy Daughter Dance is happening on February first. Unfortunately, I think my daughters have, that ship has sailed with me being able to take them, but those tickets are really sought after, so if you have daughters that you want to take, I would get into that early. For adults, the Bridges Prom two-point O is Saturday, February fifteenth. Their tickets are on sale at their website for that. That goes to help at-risk teenagers in high school, provide them places to stay and stay in school and have a kind of an upward path if they experience homelessness. Something that we found out just moments ago, the Central Oklahoma Long Range Transit Plan is having a virtual town hall on Thursday, January thirtieth, from eleven-thirty a.m. to one p.m., where they'll be talking about updates to regional transit and what that looks like for Norman and some of our surrounding communities. That is at connectcentralok.com, connectcentralok.com. And again, that's on January thirtieth. Then, another event that's on January thirtieth is the Forty-Ninth Annual Police and Fire Chili Supper, which is happening at the Norman High School Commons. They'll actually have a drive-through open until seven p.m., and the chili's really good, so go by and meet some of our first responders and get some chili. And then, just on the topic of first responders, I really want to take a moment to honor Norman Master Police Officer Jenny Bryan. We had a celebration of her life, I guess it was about a week ago. She was really an inspiration to everyone that she met, and she showed, always showed what it means to fight with everything that you got. So thank you sixteen-twenty-three, and we appreciate what you did for our community.
Councilmember?
Thank you, and good evening to everybody, and thank you all for tuning in here in person and at home. Just a few things, most of what I kind of had down has already been mentioned, and I echo the same sentiments of my colleagues on those issues. I do just also want to remind everybody about the deadline for registering to vote on Friday or updating your voter registration. Oklahoma is now one of the states where you can register to vote and update your registration online, and so you can visit the Cleveland County Election Board website, which will direct you to the state website where you can do that, and definitely encourage everybody to exercise your right to vote in local elections. Every vote absolutely matters. We've seen many elections in Norman that have been decided by very few votes. Two of our City Council races last year were decided by less than a hundred votes, so, in a city of a hundred and thirty thousand plus people. So keep that in mind. It's very easy and simple to do, and encourage everybody to do that. And then also want to thank our city staff that worked very tirelessly to try to keep the streets as clear as they could last week. Sort of impossible task in a city as large as ours. I was reminding someone who was upset that their street wasn't cleared, and I just wanted, I just reminded them that Norman covers almost two hundred square miles of city limits, that we have, I think, almost a thousand miles of paved roads in the city of Norman. And it's maybe not realistic to expect that every single street in the whole city is going to be perfectly clear after we have one of the larger snowstorms we've, as far as inches, I think, that we've had in a few years. So I appreciate our staff and their efforts doing the best they can with what we have, and trying to keep everybody safe. And then also, the last one, just to remind everybody that next Thursday at four p.m. here at City Hall, we have the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting. We did not meet in December because it fell on the day after Christmas, so, but in the, in the Community Planning and Transportation Committee, every month, we get an update from city staff on public transit ridership, projects related to public transit, street construction, sidewalks, any kind of infrastructure basically that might be going on in the city. So if you have any questions for any, any questions about those issues that you would like for us to discuss or get answers for you, please feel free to contact me directly or your council member, and we will make sure that those are brought up in the committee. It is livestreamed. If you aren't able to make it in person, you can watch it on the city YouTube channel, and then it's available for replay at your convenience after that. So that's all I got this week. Thank you very much.
Councilmember?
Thank you, City of Norman, residents of Ward Eight. A few announcements. One, Parks and Rec, they've been working with, their Foresty Division has been working with the Norman Fire Department to develop a wildfire mitigation plan. They started in early December. They have awarded a contract to Chalita. It's a Native American-owned company based in Oklahoma City to create Norman's first community wildfire protection plan, so it's very timely. They had a kickoff meeting in December, representatives from Norman Fire Department, the GIS Division, the legal staff, city manager's office, and Environmental Services Division to establish goals and meeting schedules. This plan not only exists as a document that the city can use to plan on how to respond to the wildfires, but it's also a key component used when applying for larger grants and funding that can be used to implement the recommended mitigation strategies that the plan includes, and will reduce the likely and severity of wildfires. There'll be more information in the next coming weeks and months on that. A lot of it's educational, along with also practical. So big kudos to them, and, yes. And then, the next one is the Norman North, kind of finishing up Spud Week. Spud is the Students Performing Unselfish Deeds. It's student-led, it's a philanthropy, philanthropy week, and they raise money for four, they raised money for four recipients this year. I won't use the names, but one of the recipients is a second grader at Wilson Elementary, has been diagnosed in battling B precursor acute lymphoblastic leukemia since early last year. Second recipient's a fifth grader at Truman, was diagnosed with brain cancer at twenty-two months old, a lot of surgeries, managed seizures, all kinds of stuff. He had his fifth brain surgery on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. The third recipient was Officer Jenny Bryan. Everybody knows her story, so they raised money for her and her family. And then, the last recipient is the only organization that they raised money for this year, was the Cavick Kids Foundation. They're dedicated to supporting children and youth facing chronic and life-threatening illnesses. They offer free camps and programs to help kids who cannot, who often cannot sleep away from home. Long story short, this group of seniors at Norman North, in the four years that they've been doing Spud, they have raised eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. And all that money was given by our community to these kids who have just selflessly given it out to deserving people. So I just really want to honor the, recognize the, the kids at Spud and their, their student, their student leaders and their, the teachers that are helping them along with it. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank Public Works, Utilities, all the city workers that kept us going. We all took showers, we all used the body, we all drove on roads, all of that stuff just kind of normalized life, thanks to the work that you guys do, and I appreciate it very much. Next item on the, on the agenda is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Item One through Item fourteen be placed on the Consent Docket. I need a motion to place Items One through fourteen on the Consent Docket.
Second.
Motion, second. Motion on the floor is to place Items One through fourteen on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to place Items One through fourteen on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Second.
Motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket? The motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. You may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number fifteen has been withdrawn by staff. Item number sixteen, a public hearing, a public hearing regarding acceptance of a grant in the amount of forty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy to the City of Norman, the Moore Police Department, and the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office, from the United States Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, through the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, with Norman's portion of thirty thousand, two hundred and five, to be used by the Norman Police Department for advanced specialty equipment and training. Approval of such a contract and, and budget appropriation. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to open the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and it passes unanimously. The public hearing is now open.
Thank you, ma'am. Chief, would you come in and stand in for Stiggy, please?
I don't, I, I think you all have heard this grant before. It's a Justice Assistance Grant. We get it every year. It is a formula-based grant. They just base it off your crime rates and your population. We are disparate populations, just like Cleveland County and Moore, which we will pass through money to both of those jurisdictions, as outlined in the report. Our thirty thousand is mainly, as always, used for crime scene processing or our crime lab, and that is the same thing what we use it for this year, for various equipment, cameras, processing equipment, and training. And I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Councilmember?
Does that also include things like rape kits, testing, and stuff like that?
Those are separate. They build those. It's mainly like for taking photographs, cameras, scales, different things like that.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Once public comments have concluded, council may choose to answer your questions. Madam Clerk, are there anybody signed?
We have, I don't see him, but Ben Plummer.
I don't see Ben.
I don't either, and Cynthia Rogers, and I don't see her either.
Okay.
And that is all.
Thank you, ma'am. Any final comments from council regarding this item? Scene.
Evan, did you want to talk?
Oh, okay.
I forgot to look at mine and what.
I need.
Thank you. Thank you. Any final comments from council? Hearing none. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes, but hearing is now closed.
Thank you, ma'am. I need a motion to accept the grant and approve the contract and budget appropriation.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and second. Any questions from council regarding this? Is to accept the grant and approve the contract and budget appropriation. Councilmembers?
All votes have been, to approve that the contract and budget appropriation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number seventeen, an ordinance amending the historic district commission requirement, the application requirements for certificate of appropriateness, edits for consistency or corrective purposes, and to allow the historic preservation officer to grant time extension for certificates of appropriateness. I need a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Second.
Motion and second. Presentation.
Good evening, Anna Eastar, Planning Department. I'm the Historic Preservation Officer for the City of Norman, and please excuse the tail end of my cull, but it sounds worse than what it is. I, I thought any day now it'll quit. Thank you, and so, as the Historic Preservation Officer, I'm bringing this forward to clean up the certificate of appropriateness application process. These amendments will align the historic district certificate of appropriateness application and notification, notification process with other planning requests processes that we have. And I did provide a annotated ordinance in your, in your packet. Section- Section, and I was just going to go over briefly the changes, the amendments. Section 36535-G3, the certificate of appropriateness and submitting COA application materials. In this, it removes a list of requirements for applications and replaces it with a reference to 36535-G9A, and so that they're all consolidated in one place and makes it clearer. And then we also are going to provide a, in this section, a deadline for the feedback session before the historic district commission. And it allows a feedback session, but it doesn't provide any deadline. And again, we modified some wording to provide clarity. In Section 36535-G9A, COA application requirements and procedures, applications, we remove the required 24 calendar days prior to the meeting from the submission deadline, and this will, again, align it with other processes and by replacing it with the deadlines to, to meet the first business day of each month, which is what happens with the other planning application processes in them. And then, again, provided some modification of wording to just provide clarity. And then in Section 36535-G9B, compliance with COA, required procedures for certificate of appropriateness, notification of historic district commission, we remove the word "working" from in front of "days." This will align the notification of the historic district commission with other planning notification processes. And then finally, 36535-G9B9, compliance with COA and required procedures for certificate of appropriateness, amending a COA. A deadline for a COA amendment request was added. Again, it provided that you could amend your COA, but no deadline was provided. This will provide one. And then it also allows me, as the historic preservation officer, to grant a six-month extension to approved certificate of appropriatenesses, so that the applicants, provide them relief that they don't have to return to the commission to, for reapplication and reapproval. And I think that is it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. The Planning Commission did hear and recommend approval in their November meeting. And with that, I can answer any questions if anybody has any.
Questions from council? You did such a good job, nobody asked me questions.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on this item. Remarks should be directed to council. Go ahead.
Evan Dunn, Ward Seven, and if this is for clarity, I'm for it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and nobody else? First to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast, and it's on second reading, passes unanimously.
Excellent. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Second.
A motion and second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Number 18, an ordinance fixing the compensation of the city attorney. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions from council regarding this item? Okay. Members of the opportunities, members of the public, you can say it.
Let's see, we have Mayumi Windler.
So, Windler, Ward Two. So my question is about compensation and equity. So, I went through, like, meeting minutes to see, you know, what Catherine Walker got started at, and I think it was like $193,000, and I'm just kind of wondering, is that, like, when she left, what was she making? Is that the same as what Rick will be making now? That's all.
Evan? I'm sorry, Evan Dunn?
Yeah, kind of a similar question, I guess, but let's get that established, and let's go into getting you all some money. Let's go into reviewing the charter and changing it so that you all can get paid a little bit. Thank you.
Questions from, or comments from council? Okay. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes, and to adopt the ordinance on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
A motion and second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have, and to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 19, a contract with Ricky J. Knighton II, setting forth the terms and conditions of employment as city attorney. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the contract.
Second.
A motion and second. Any questions from council regarding this item? Hearing none. It's an opportunity for members of the public.
You have the same speakers, Mayumi?
Mayumi?
Evan?
Rick, is this a good contract for you? I mean, can we get you 5% more?
No.
All right. Councilmember Becca?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, I've had the opportunity to serve with Mr. Knighton when he was just a litigator, when he was interim, and now hopefully with approval of this, full-time city attorney, and I just want to say it's been a pleasure. He's an outstanding member of our team, and I very much look forward to the future with you, sir.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve the contract. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been, and the contract passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and be limited to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Okay. I don't see Trey Kirby either.
Mm-mm.
Okay, so the first three haven't, are not here. Mayumi?
Again, Mayumi Windler, Ward Two. Okay, so there's the, the little website where you can request data from the city, and that's kind of cool, but in looking at the data, there are a couple of requests that I feel are like a little predatory in nature, because they're asking for people who have had citations on their properties, who've had their water turned off, stuff like that, and, I mean, it seems pretty apparent that the people requesting that data are looking for people where they're possibly in danger of losing their homes and then increasing the whole homeless issue. So, is there anything that the city could do to help the people on those lists? Like, so in the, the council conference, there is the whole litter, litter crew thing. If the people have citations, like, on their yards, could that litter crew help people with their yards? If, you know, if all the public areas have been taken care of, you know, can they go out and help people who are in need with their yards for, you know, if they're behind on their water bills and they've gotten them cut off? Can the city, is there any kind of budget to help those people? So, they don't get, you know, put out on the street, that kind of thing. That's it, thanks.
Oh, okay. Evan Dunn, 1400 Garfield Avenue, Ward Seven. Welcome back. Hope everybody had a healthy, healing holiday season. I know we have differences, but I want to thank every, I want to thank staff, I want to thank all of you, I want to thank everybody who just shows up, you know, because, you know, when, you know, Austin mentioned the, the fires in California, and people are going there, people are running to those problems, and I know that whenever you show up, you're running to these problems, because these problems are not going to stop, and I, I respect it and I admire you, and I'm inspired by the models that you all set, every one of us. I'm inspired by the people who show up at the farmer's market, you know? These are some of the most, you know, entrepreneurial and dynamic people who are making the changes, and we, they deserve our support. I celebrated Christmas with my ex-now-current girlfriend in Charlottesville, and we had a great time. We were really close to DC, and then we were just around the corner from Monticello. And when I think about American history, I come back to the, the founder, you know, the, the writer of the Declaration of Independence, the, the man who said that in order to form more perfect unions, we're establishing this nation, and we're breaking with the trends, we're breaking with the monarchies and the totalitarian systems of governance, and we're going to use the lessons that we have learned from the failures of prior republics, and we're going to create something that has an infrastructure that can be sustained. And when I think about what I'm trying to do with Youth Thrones, we're trying to perfect the union of the body. We're trying to perfect the way in which the body can absorb that constant force of gravity and equalize it, to maximize and optimize the body's ability to distribute and to dispense all of that oxygen and to evacuate all of those toxins, that toxigen. The more perfectly you arrange your body, the more perfectly you breathe, the more of a perfect union you become, and that's what food foresting is. So this notion about forming more perfect unions, I hope that's something that will carry with us into 2025, and, you know, I hope that will kind of animate us and give us a sense of appreciation and gratitude for being able to participate in this experience. I love you, and I'm glad we're back.
That's it? Well, council, we are adjourned.